Call the meeting on the order, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all parts of it.
I would remind you that your cell phones either vibrate or mute. And we will approve, uh, proceed by approving the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in fa- uh, motion's been made to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Approve the minutes from the last meeting. Wait, uh, need a motion, please?
Anybody see anything wrong with them?
I don't.
Okay. I'm going to approve the minutes.
Second?
One second.
We're moved in second to approve the minutes from the last meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Payroll and bills to be paid, Chris here's the payroll, this is by approval. Uh, bills Franny, you don't have any?
Oh, yeah, unforcemently bills.
Actually, if you really think about it, this is the least amount of bills we've ever had. If you take out two of them.
Really?
Yeah. But those two are about three hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, the, uh, Clayton Energy one, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, that is, is biodiesel, so.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it looks bad when you first look at it, but.
Discussion to Franny, for bills to be paid?
And then, yeah, I mean, if you look down there below, we've got three bankers' trusts, those are all of our bonds. We've got all that money in savings, that's what we save for twelve thousand five hundred and four every year, so. I mean, if you really look at it, we've got about twenty-five thousand dollars for the bills, so, that's why I said that's the cheapest that we've had.
If there's no other discussion, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved to approve, pay the bills.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second to approve the bills to be paid, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the rezoning of two residential lots.
You can open that.
Okay, I just move a motion.
Okay.
Give me a motion, please.
I'd make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the, uh, two proposed lots.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second to open the, uh, public hearing for the rezoning of the two residential lots, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Discussion on, uh, this public hearing for rezoning of two residential lots.
I did not get any, uh.
Response?
Any comments, or they were written.
Anybody here in the conference?
Which, which block are they?
Right across from our office.
Lots four and five, and block eight.
Stop the Dolores Brothers since Howard.
And what's the reason for that?
Put a commercial building on it.
They want to put a commercial building up.
I asked about that years ago, and they said they never put commercial lots in there. That, I'm still looking for a place to put up a building. Has anybody come up with any commercial lots otherwise, unless you're rezoning?
No, but we have. We bought corn builds.
Yeah.
Right down here, it's very good.
Yeah, we're actually going to talk about those tonight, too.
Right next to them.
So if you don't.
Between Farber and Ottoman, and Halletts?
And Halletts, that lot there.
Wall Lake, the city of Wall Lake owns those?
Not big enough.
They're old lots, not big enough?
That's what I said. That's why I looked at that other lots before, and I was told by City Council, that that doesn't ever be commercial.
And, that's exactly why we're going through the process, to get that changed, so. You know, Joe?
So if I have other residential area that I need, I can put up, I can have you guys change it, like this?
Bring it to us and let us look at it. Part of the reason why we're doing this, JR, is directly across the street from a, a commercial area right now. And, you know, it'll kind of just blend in, so.
The building itself, when it's trucking.
I mean, if it's, if it's across the street from the park, it'd probably be a different story, but.
I was saying, there's no other commercial, and on that block.
Down that block, across the street. But yeah, I mean, we would certainly look at it, JR. I don't see why we wouldn't.
Bring it to our attention, so that we can look it over and make a decision.
And, and we understand that you took it to the council once before, but I'm reasonably sure that this wasn't the same council. And so, I mean.
But has this council come up with any other land that could be bigger building on, for commercial?
We have not talked about that, no.
We've talked about it, but we haven't firmening up. I will say, we have talked about it, that we have done.
We have tried, but all the owners of the land around us are quite happy to keep their ownership.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the biggest problem.
I thought the old poplar plant might go, but Snyder don't want to sell any piece of that off, and that'll be a good spot there.
No, and I like that.
I don't understand it either, because it's just sitting there.
Yeah, they own the one to the, uh.
East.
East.
Yeah, they're all, plenty of land in there. I guess we could ask Leon Snyder again.
He don't own it anymore.
He don't? Kid's own it. Well, somebody owns it.
Danny does.
Well, okay.
Yeah, Leon don't own it anymore.
Okay, well, you can talk to Danny.
Yeah.
Why don't you go talk to him?
Yeah. I'll, I'll do that.
I'll talk to him.
Or, or Uber can.
I know.
Yeah, things could change there, you never know.
Well, yeah.
Any, uh, other discussion? And entertain, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing for the rezoning of the two residential lots. And, uh, we're going to move on to, uh, Joe, no, CDBG project update, yeah, Joe.
And I've got on your generator fuel tank, just because I want to talk to you guys a little bit about that, but we'll let Joe go ahead and.
Yeah, and it's just a quick update, um, yeah.
And, Joe, I apologize, I didn't call you.
Oh, that's fine. He just knows this well.
No, it's not.
I talked to Lynn, I was just going to make sure you were on tonight, and just make sure that this is true. Basically, all that is, we got some, uh, conversations back and forth. The top one was basically with the flood plain permit. We did get confirmation back, and it's been a while, I sent it to Chris, to just let you guys know, and maybe he talked about it, too, but. They were supposed to have it on their list to look at today, April twenty-eighth, so. They did get us for out of, you know, did honor the out-of-order processing, so that we didn't have to wait three to four months before they looked at it, you know, once it was sent in. So I kind of leave them alone, maybe this week, and maybe Friday, maybe I'll give her a call and just see if it's, if it still was on that schedule, that they got moving ahead with it this week, you know. Chance are, maybe they got behind it, they didn't get started on it today, but. I'll wait towards the end of the week and maybe give them a call, or email her, and just make sure they got started on that. Only other thing was, is the other email, that was the, uh, some of the conversation back and forth with Jennifer Button, as far as getting the DNR construction permit. Talked to her about, and there's a couple details that are with it, are showing, uh, the ones, the pressure gauge, sample tap, and flow meter readout. That's what they're going to want to see on the inside of wellhouse, building number two. We're going to run the flow meter readout in there anyhow, but they want us to add this pressure gauge and sample tap. We talked about that previously, but that's the detail that it sent her. And then the other detail was on the air release valve manhole, talking about bringing that pipe, kind of the exhaust intake pipe up, up through the top, up above ground. And I think the only comment she had on those two details, according to the email, was that on the pressure gauge and, uh, tap there, she just wants to make sure that we add a detail in there for a smooth-nose sampling tap, which we didn't call, I mean, I got a host bid called out, that I can easily change that, so we call out an actual sampling tap. So we can take samples. Yeah, it's on that line, but it's going to be in wellhouse number two, to tap off that line right before it taps into the existing vein going up to the treatment plant. So that was the only change she had there, and then the other question she had was on, if that air release valve manhole filled up with water because of the flood, you know, is there a way to test the water before it gets to the treatment plant? Well, that would be that sampling tap inside of wellhouse number two building.
Yeah, because that, even if it did flood down there, it wouldn't be flooded here.
Correct. Or at least that way you can test that raw water that's coming from the well.
Yeah.
And keep an eye on it before it does go into the plant. Um, and then the only other thing leads into your trans, or the, well, the transformer. We were going back and forth, you know, we had to move it, couldn't get it four hundred foot away. So we started talking, and Chris and Mark, amongst, you know, through some telephone conversations, emails. Found out that there is either a, I guess eco-friendly oil, it's kind of almost, what'd you say, Chris?
It's vegetable oil, actually.
Yeah, vegetable transformer, yeah. And then otherwise, we could do a dry, dry transformer, but it sounded like they were kind of hard to come by, Chris.
Yeah, what we, what we found out was that you can get a transformer with a vegetable oil in it. And I talked to Jennifer, and she said, get me the MSDS so I can look at it, to see, you know, if it is actually, uh, biological.
Yeah.
Uh, and she looked at the one that says vegetable oil, there's two different ones, she looked at the one that says vegetable oil in it, and she said that that probably would pass. She would be okay with that. Uh, so I think that's the way we're going to go, we're trying to figure out how much they cost. It takes a couple of weeks to get a, a quote back on that, so.
And then I think in all fairness, we're probably going to, what's the thoughts on another one that is closed, Chris, switch that out?
I would recommend that if we do anything, we change both of them into this vegetable oil. It might cost us five thousand dollars, but it'll save us a lot of headache with the DNR, so.
It'd save you from having to.
Do you like the veggie rather than the dry?
Well, well, no, and the reason I say that, Steve, is because the way, it sounds to me like the, the vegetable oil ones are eight to ten weeks out. If you order one today, it takes eight to ten weeks to get it. Sounds to me like the dry transformers are even longer.
Oh, really?
So that could be up to three months, um, and they're probably going to be running them up.
Why do we have to have two, Chris?
The one that's sitting down there right now, Rick, is, is not far enough away from where we're proposing to put the well.
Right.
So we would change that one out also, and the, the one that we're going to put with the well, uh.
That would be on the burn with the well?
Yeah, we could keep it up on the burn.
Then we could put it right on the burn there, and we could work on it right there if we needed to. So that's why we're talking about two, the one that's already there, and the one that we're going to put there.
Okay, I just wonder why they weren't sharing, getting one big enough to run them both now?
I don't know, Mark, yeah, hadn't seen, I know that one has two, I think the one that's theirs got, what, two feet off it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Goes south, and then the other feet goes west?
I don't even think it beats that.
Doesn't it?
The one, okay, here, the one that's there now is a single-phase transformer, and the one we need at the well is a three-phase.
That's, that, yeah, Mark did say that.
That's three.
We do need three phases, that is only a single there.
But you can do single phase on three phases, too, yeah.
You should be.
Oh, I see what you're saying, go with one and have.
Yeah, instead of doing an expensive two, to re, because all that one there runs is basically the figuring track of the airport.
Okay.
You can run a slow phase on three phase, but you can't go the other way around.
Just to say they're expensive and not holding.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
That's what I think, and you know.
I will certainly.
And I'll, it's not very big, but.
Still put that on the burn then, is what we're thinking?
Yeah.
Get it up out of them.
Yeah, it wouldn't be hard.
They just have to come out that sectionalizer with the new wire, I guess. Yeah.
We can take the one we got down there, we always find someplace to use that.
Almost definitely.
Sure.
The old one, you know, we got plenty of places for using that old one.
Because otherwise you'd go well, but, uh.
Yeah.
Plus it's not there in a well.
Right.
You're going to save the cost or something that's only, is hardly ever used, you know.
Sure.
Is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, because I don't think that transformer's got to be dedicated to the well, you know, you can have other feet off it.
Nowhere in what the other stuff's going to use.
Yep. Yeah. That was a good catch, I guess, we kind of were looking, I guess I kind of had my blinders on, you know, and had that stunt one there.
I never even thought to question that, yeah, for January.
How are you coming with railroad, Joe?
Well, that was the thing, I tried calling Dave again this afternoon, because I touched base with him to find out how he was coming with that, and hadn't heard back, so then I tried again today, and just got his voicemail again on his phone, so.
I stopped and talked to him the other day, and he said he's, uh, I said, Joe, I'd like to talk to you, and I also said, he said that, uh, he's playing phone tag with them.
Well, it sounds that way, because I try calling.
Just get back to him whenever he wants to, you know.
I called, I called the railroad guy, and he said, don't leave a message, try to email him. So I, so why is even, you know, let's not even listen to his phone, I mean.
And then Dave also said that, it said right in there, too, if you email me, I check that only so often, so. Sounds like the guy just doesn't want to get, get gotten older.
Okay, well, at least he's trying.
Anything else? I'll talk to Dave again about that, too.
Anything else, Joe, do you need to bring us up to speed?
No, I don't think, I think that's it.
Any questions for Joe?
I do have a couple of questions for Dave, and I'll get, you know, when I can get ahold of him, kind of about his, uh, shop drawings, so we get those reviewed and get it back to him.
So, sit here just for a minute while we talk about the fuel tank.
Okay.
Um, I've been talking to Jennifer Button about our fuel tank, we don't have a fuel tank with the generator, we're going to take this generator down there. As long as, uh, the guy who's, uh, who could bring us our twenty-five KW, if you guys decide to get one, uh, he's going to look at it, make sure it runs all right. He did tell me, though, that if it, if it put out a load before, and it runs fine now, it will put out a load again. He said that doesn't change. Uh, so I think we're okay with that, with that generator. Um, but I've been talking to Jennifer Button, the same lady that Joe's been talking to, uh. If we have a fuel tank with diesel fuel in it, down by the well, where we're talking about putting the generator, we have to have some kind of containment of that. So I asked her, can we put a slab of concrete down with a six-inch curb on either, on, on all four sides, and then put a building over top of it? She said that would pass, I mean, basically in a heartbeat. Uh, and then she said, how would you fill it? I said, well, we would probably have to fill it through the walk-in door that we had, and she said, that's good, because if you fill it from the outside, then, then I wouldn't pass it, so. Looks to me like if we can, if we can get a slab of concrete with a six-inch curb, and I think Rick could probably do that, uh, then. I mean, a building's got to be ten foot by twelve foot, with a six-inch curb, that'll hold four hundred and fifty gallon of liquid. So that'll be plenty if we put a three hundred gallon tank on there.
Rather than curb, can you go with just a block, Rick?
No.
It has to be a curb.
You're stopping, you're stopping. You're doing a designated building for the fuel, too?
No, I would, I would put them all together, Rick.
Okay.
The fuel tank right next to the generator in one, in one building. Uh, I would think that would be the best thing. I, I also asked her about a tank that contains itself, a self-contained tank, she said they won't approve those, because generally, the tank around the tank will only hold a portion of what's in the actual tank.
Sure.
So they don't like those at all.
What was the objection to, uh, the filling from the outside?
Because you said, you fill from the outside, you spill it, it defeats the purpose. Which, you know, six ounces of, I don't know, but. I wasn't going to argue with it, we have to put a building up anyway, so we make it a little bit bigger.
When you want it inside anyway, that way you can control the temperature of it, it's not, yeah, flooded fuel.
And every time it rains, you don't have to.
Let's get the water on.
Yeah, get the water on, right, so. So that's what we've talked about as far as a fuel tank. Now, a fuel tank, I mean, I, I don't think it really matters what kind of fuel tank we get. You, you guys can see in here, I've got an email from this Burn guy, if we get a, we get a good fuel tank, it's going to cost us seven thousand dollars, I'm not sure we need to spend that amount of money. Yeah, Mark said, why can't we go to a, to a farmer and buy one of those round fuel tanks?
Two hundred gallon barrels are two eighty-five.
Those are all over the place.
Yeah.
The way it looks.
I would, uh, not getting them on the farm, but I would just go buy a new one.
Okay.
Just for the fact that.
Go rush, no sediment, whatever.
You can surely find them someplace.
I looked at those two, I looked at those two, Franny, those are about twelve, fifteen hundred bucks, I, I mean, that's not too bad.
I mean, that way alleviates the problem of, well, we get it, is contaminated, or is it's got a hole in it, you know, that we didn't know about, or.
Get older out of it or something, never know.
I see my mom's got one of those at the house, and she's got a filter on hers that she ended up with on, because it's such an old tank.
I didn't share a filter on this one, didn't you?
It's got sediment from that tank.
It would actually be set pretty good, Chris, I guess, as far as being able to utilize the other generator and.
This generator we got.
Because otherwise, we were like, uh, that first go around, and the generator is right down there, and that was sixty or forty or sixty thousand.
Forty thousand, just for the generator, that's not hooking it up and everything.
Not a thing.
And I talked to Mark, I talked to Mark, he thinks we can use this, uh, automatic switch that we've got. The, the thing that he was worried about is he doesn't have a book with it, so he doesn't know exactly how to wire it, uh.
Should be able to get a little book.
Should be able to go out and find it.
He, he thought we could get that done, too.
Somebody smarter than me.
That's one of the people that come in, nobody in this room.
Yeah.
You came up with the idea for the.
Yeah, it's probably.
You only put aside for the little lights down there.
That's all I got for that one.
Okay, anybody else for Joe, discussion? Like I say, if you have any questions for Joe, just give them to Chris, and Chris will get them in front of Joe.
Yep.
And he'll get your questions answered. Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
And move on, discuss slash approve residential lots rezoned to commercial, and that's what we had that public hearing for. I'm sure everyone is aware of where we're talking.
Now, you guys can see in there the, uh, the protest, there's a written protest against the proposed amendment, uh. So we, we can still pass it if we want to, we just need to have a, a majority of vote of four, instead of three. Uh, but we didn't get any written protests, and, and I know it sounds like JR's not very happy with us right now, but, uh, doesn't sound like he wants to protest it either, so.
Discussion? Yes, sir?
Does it have a, like, just a street address, those, those two lots?
Uh, yeah, the best would be First and Sherwood.
First and Sherwood?
Would be the best street address that we can come up with, so.
Northwest, northeast?
No, First and Sherwood.
Okay.
First Street, oh, you mean in the corner? Yeah, it'd be in the, it'd be in the northwest corner of those two.
All right, thank you.
I have only one question with this, Chris, with that, with, uh, putting a building on there, is there any, uh, specs or anything that we know, what the, size or height, or?
In our, in our ordinances?
Do we know what we're going to put there, that's what I was wondering, what they can put there?
What they can't, let's talk about what they want to put there. What, what Craig has told me is they want to put a roughly fifty by seventy building, and, and he thinks it's going to be less than, uh, it's going to be around eighteen feet tall at the peak.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not going to be outlandish, our, our rule is it can't be over fifteen feet tall, so, uh, eighteen feet's not a lot more than that. That's not what they're going to do, that's what they've talked to me about, so. But yeah, we do have, we do have rules in our ordinance system.
Yeah, they got to be so far in from the street, and fifteen feet, and.
Yeah, they still have to abide by all of that, so. The height was what the issue.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, so we don't look way outlandish in, you know, in there.
Yeah, and if you, if you look at the, the, uh, topo, or whatever you want to call it, if you look at.
Topography?
Yeah, of that area, I mean, it goes from, from north to south, down several feet.
It's quite, pretty good off the top of that hill, too.
My, my thought about it is, it's going to add to the tax base of the town, and, and, uh, like I said before, honestly, I don't, I don't know that anybody would ever build a house there.
No, that's the thing.
So our process would be now, uh, to, if you guys want to approve it, have a motion in a second, and, and approve it.
Why make a motion, we approve lots four and five, put a rezoning.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second to, uh, rezone lots four and five of.
Yes.
Of, uh.
Block eight.
Block eight.
In the first addition to Wall Lake.
In the first addition to Wall Lake. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion passed. Discuss and approve purchase of twenty-five KW generator for dry well, and I don't know if Chris is talking about this, but there's a lot of additions that can go along with this, correct? Chris, is this the one that's, you said the power washer goes with it, and?
No.
Oh, no.
No.
Wrong one.
No.
Yeah, that's, uh, that deal was next.
It was kind of fly by night.
Uh-huh. No, this, this is, uh, we've talked about this a couple of times in council meetings, and, and this is just something that came out of the conversations with this guy, Burn Carey, uh, when I started looking for, um, a transformer for the well and the treatment plant. Uh, one of the things that, that the DNR has always suggested to us is to have a generator to run our dry well. In case our power goes down, and we still have something to get the sewer water to the lagoons, instead of letting it bypass into the creek. Um, and we can get this for, for under, just under seven thousand dollars, and, um, you know, it's not, it's not something that we have to do tonight, uh, but.
I would just not postpone it?
I would recommend that we do do it. Uh, it's, you know, it's seven thousand dollars, and it's going to help.
One thing Franny has taught me, when we postpone it, we postpone it, and we postpone it, and we postpone it, and we postpone it.
We've never been favored either.
We have never been forced to do it, but if we do get forced to do it, Gary?
No.
They'll, they'll make the specs, and.
Tougher to help.
And it'll, the seven thousand dollars will be tripled.
You know, as I drive around the community, community, as I look, and I've seen towns half the size of ours, they've got a, a generator, standby generator on their dry wells, or whatever, you know, it's just, and I'm just, you know, it's just been kind of shocked that we've never been actually forced into that situation over there. It's better to be proactive than preactive.
I think so, too.
Now, have you and Rick looked at this, or got pictures of this, or?
Pictures of.
This generator that he's talking about here?
Yeah, there's, there's pictures, he sent pictures on here.
They're on there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Do we have natural gas back there, Rick? Or, Chris?
This is diesel.
Okay, that's who said natural gas. Natural gas, that's what I wanted.
Gas is what it said.
So that's the difference, do we get to run the gas car away, we don't have no gas.
We don't have gas there, do we?
No. See, that's quite an issue there.
Yeah, that is an issue, I.
Natural gas subtracts the gas, aren't we?
No.
That's the reasoning why we couldn't have the natural gas on for the well.
The DNR, because of, we have a disaster, and pipeline gets broke.
First thing they shut down, even, even if, even if it doesn't get broke, Franny, the first thing they shut down is the natural gas, because it could get broke, so. Yeah, I, I completely overlooked that.
We better reload that a little bit.
Can they be converted to propane?
Probably can be, yeah.
Sure could.
Yeah, that's pretty easy. Five hundred gallon propane, any back there?
Just the, the.
Yeah, you got to change your injectors on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Isn't that correct, Rick?
Natural gas is easy enough to change.
I think we should relook into it before we make this decision, because we got to make sure we put the prices in, or the extra money.
Yeah.
We have two weeks of mouthwork to make a decision.
I would say, I'd make the motion, if, if you look into it, Chris, and if it doesn't cost us much more than what it is right now, to make the change, let's just go ahead, I'd make the motion to go ahead and go with it.
We'll see once what he says about changing it to propane, check with him, he would probably know. Depends, he works on that stuff, I'd almost bet he does.
I'm sure he does. Sure you go with that one.
Yeah.
Uh, second to Franny's motion?
Let's.
Okay, let's back up for discussion.
You know, I like your, I like your motion, but we can still second it, but.
Put a dollar amount on it, for example, again?
Seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Maybe just say ten thousand.
And I'm probably not either, so, just put, just put ten thousand on there, just.
Just, it just makes it easier than, uh.
You mean you have to spend it?
No, I won't. I won't.
Oh, you're going to go and watch yourself stand.
We have unlimited finances, so go for it, I mean.
I don't know where that came from.
I'll say. I can see the numbers.
They moved in second to accept this bid, uh, prior to, to see if we can convert it to propane with a ten thousand dollar, uh, top figure with the conversion. We're gonna roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron? Okay. Okay, now it's me, huh? We talked to Megan and she has accepted the seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollar salary. She will still be required to keep her hours. We wanna know how many hours that she's gonna devote to the pool. So the only thing that I have to say is, do you have any questions? That I can answer?
What was your wages last, uh, last year?
Sixty-nine.
No, what I mean, her hourly wages.
Yeah, what, Chris?
So I went back and looked and, uh, found out that Megan's uh, per hour salary last year was ten fifty.
Correct.
Uh, we were under the assumption that was ten seventy-five at the last meeting and, uh, also, uh, last year she started around the first of April. This year she's not gonna start till the first of May. I, I mean, she's already been working a little bit, probably.
Yeah, you gotta back that up a little bit.
So, you know, you got about three weeks in there that, uh, that are gonna add to this. So, so that's part of the thing. I don't particularly care for a salary. And the reason I don't is because in our system, you put in a number for a salary, you put in ten thousand, and that gets split up into twenty-six
Weeks.
Weeks. Twenty-six paychecks, so twenty-six, two weeks. That's fifty-two, obviously, so. I don't know how we would do it for just the fifteen or sixteen weeks that she's actually gonna be the pool manager. And so for that reason, I just, I would just as soon say, you know what, let's give her a raise of a quarter or fifty cents. And let's pay her that way. Uh, and I understand that the forty hours is, is tough, you know, she's gotta be down there sometimes. But I think, I think if she's, she's organized enough to say, these lifeguards need to be there, she doesn't have to be there all the time. I honestly believe that. So I would recommend that we give her a raise in her hourly uh, pay, but I would not recommend doing a salary.
Discussion, council?
We may be able, we may be able to figure out a way to do it, but I'm not sure.
Well, that big number, that sixty-eight hundred last year was coming because of the overtime, right?
Yes.
Well, I mean, some part of it, not a very, it's, it's an insignificant, significant amount, Gary.
I don't know, I just.
I'm guessing, what, three, maybe four times at the most, Chris, she got over forty?
I would say it'd be three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars maybe.
It was, it was a very insignificant amount.
I would say though that part of the reason why she had to work so many hours was because she was new. And she had to figure some of this stuff out on the go.
That, and I will also add to that, that she had some guards that, uh, there was either funerals or weddings or some sort of athletic thing that came up that they had to be gone and we have, we have to have X amount of guards at the location. So that's what picked her hours up. So, and that's fine. I, I will have to approach her to, to make sure that she's comfortable with a wage increase rather than a just a straight salary. So.
If she does happen to get more hours, Steve, then that would just be overtime.
Yeah.
So what do you want to increase to, Chris?
You know, I, I haven't had a lot of dealing with, uh, with the manager salary per se, but I remember the first year I was here, sounded to me like the manager hadn't had a raise in a couple of years. So, you know, I'm not sure that that's something that we have to raise every year. I think Megan did a really good job last year. Uh, as far as I'm concerned and, and as far as Rick's concerned, he's told me that he thought she did a good job. So, you know, I, I would say a quarter would probably be alright.
So what we talked about the last, I mean, I mean, we kind of.
Talked about four percent and four percent would be like forty-two cents, so it'd be
So we put it up to?
Ten ninety-two. So, I mean, if you wanted to go to eleven, that'd be roughly.
Fifty cents maybe.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be close to what everybody else got. And honestly, a quarter here or there isn't gonna, yeah, isn't gonna work.
You know, I'll throw this out of the equation. Let's just go with what we kinda had proposed as an hourly wage. And at the end of the, and end of the season, if things go well, then let's just do a bonus at the end or whatever to, to finish it up or, no. No, that way, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we're satisfied too. We're not just gonna pair an hourly wage and.
So keep it at, keep it as it is, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, whatever we kinda talked about the last time, whatever that number was. And then just at the end of the, end of the season, if, you know, everything looks good and we're satisfied with all the things going on down there, then.
Now, I will tell you one thing, Franny. Vern and I had a long discussion last Saturday here. And I told her that there was two councilmen, which I know there's two councilmen, that want a more detailed date. You sell ten dollars worth of candy, you buy twenty dollars worth of candy, I want a report, and this, this is one thing I told her. We don't want monthly. I want weekly report. And then she, she also said, well, I'm gonna get you then a attendance. What do you call it when you pay in advance, uh?
Oh, the membership.
Membership, memberships. She was gonna get, she's gonna, she's gonna make it a more detailed report and I want it weekly. And I told her.
We're over two weeks or something, yeah.
No, I want it weekly. I want it weekly. I'm not gonna bend. Now, I did tell her that we're gonna separate candy, pop, memberships. I want that all broke down. Now, I don't wanna know if she sold four M and M candies versus six licorices. I don't wanna break down that detail, but, uh, and she said she thinks she can get that done. She thinks and she can do some sort of detailed report that would help us with that.
Is she running a cash machine now, or is she?
Yeah, but the cash register that we bought
But, yeah, go ahead.
Isn't, it doesn't break it down as well as it should. We bought it.
Cheapy.
Yeah. I mean, it breaks down pop and candy and I think memberships. And it don't break it down any farther than what the daily total was.
I've seen.
That's funny.
That's funny.
But I, I don't know if it goes that far, Rob. I don't, don't quote me if it goes that far.
I bet you can't run a total off it and get that.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Can't get a daily total off of it?
No.
I don't think so.
It won't, I don't think.
It won't separate it out probably. You can get a daily total, but it'd be the whole thing.
Yeah.
You, you need one with a little bit.
Then why do you ring it into a category if you can't get a total back out?
Well.
She'll build it.
I mean, I'd have to get a total out of it and it wouldn't have the categories.
I don't know.
Food, have to go look at it and see.
Yeah, I, yeah, it ain't one of the best ones that we bought, so.
That's.
I mean, I still don't understand. If you're feeding it into a category, it's gotta come back out somewhere. We're just not doing it.
Well.
That could be, Rob.
Because, you know, I think, yeah, because otherwise it wouldn't break it down in a category.
She might not know how to run it.
Yeah, you know, it wouldn't do you any good to break it down into a category if you can't run that out.
Yep.
Well, anyway, I, I told her that and I said it will get done this year come hell or high water, so.
I'll get my wife, go down and take a look at it.
Well, she probably don't quite know how to do it from probably. Because if it's anything like one way at the restaurant, there was one that it took a little while to get used to it and figure all that out. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's got categories, then there is a way to draw that out.
And it should fit out every day.
If I see it on.
I, I don't know how many categories there was to it. I think there was.
Yeah, you only need two, memberships and food. That's all you need.
Okay, is that gonna be good enough for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you only need two.
It's accountability of what you're buying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm always like, how much food are you buying, how much food are you selling?
Yeah, yeah.
We know how much they're buying.
Yeah.
We don't know how much they're selling, how much they're giving.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
As soon as she gets out the door.
I mean, I, I don't think Hunter ever did it, but if a pretty girl walked up there, I know he wouldn't have given her a candy bar.
We know that. It's not crazy. But, uh, I need, I need, I, I'm not quite, I don't quite understand the motion you wanna make, Franny, so if you could break it down a little for me so I can understand.
Well, I, I don't know what, we talked, we talked about salary, uh, an hourly wage the last, last time we had the meeting, and I don't remember what that was for sure.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was eleven dollars an hour that, uh, that Lindsay suggested.
I think she is, Dan, she's, uh, agreed to.
Seventy-two eighty.
Seventy-two eighty. So we'll guarantee that, but we'll still pay hourly hourly.
Okay. And if she doesn't make the seventy-two eighty, then that's when it's.
At the end of the year.
Then we'll find out whether she did a good job.
Right, but, okay, alright. I need to explain this to her.
No, yeah, that way Chris is, I mean, her check will suck from an hourly and we'll just keep her running.
Okay, I'll have to approach her for it. That, that way I, uh, this is gonna get tabled, 'cause I need to approach her first before we vote on it. I wanna make sure that she's comfortable. If she's not comfortable, then we gotta go looking for another manager, so.
But she's still gonna get that.
Yeah, she's still gonna get it.
She's still gonna get that.
Yeah, so if she's comfortable with seventy-two eighty, okay, I see where you're coming from. Yeah, okay, yeah.
It'd just make it easier for his book.
Yeah, okay, I understand where you're coming from, I'm sorry.
If we're short, then we'll just make that up.
If she's long, she'll give us some back.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't think that.
She said something about you helping her out.
Yeah, I could have gone in.
Okay, now I understand, Franny, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Let me ask something else.
I don't think you've mentioned Megan's last name yet.
Ross.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Albert.
Lindsay had to go down there because she could not be there. Now, is there some reason that she has to be there all the time? There was other lifeguards there, she said.
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
I don't know, 'cause she told me that's why she wanted to put her on a salary because she was running over her forty hours.
I was pretty adamant that I didn't feel that she needed to run over forty hours. I wanted to keep her.
Well, that was it. She was.
Because our, our city guys, our city guys, unless there's a drastic emergency, water leak, sewer problem.
That's it. I don't know. That's why I.
I would just soon keep her at forty hours. There's no sense in.
I don't think there's any reason why she's gotta be there.
Okay, well, I did not know.
All the time, yeah.
Well, I honestly believe that too, that there's times when I have to be, you know. So it's, it's the kinda thing that you can't tell every day, but we did, we did hire more guards this year.
Yes.
So through the right planning, we shouldn't have.
Yes.
Well, maybe that's what it was last year too.
Well, that's exactly what it was. We didn't have enough guards because they all of a sudden, oh, I gotta go here, I gotta go there.
Okay.
Any more today, they, they ask you for a job and then they, if they got something else to do, they say, I gotta go here and do this.
I know. They leave you hanging.
And you say to them, well, I thought you're the one that came in and asked me for a job, so.
Rob is correct. Rob has hit the nail right on the head, so. Okay, uh, is there a second to Franny's motion?
I'll second it.
Moved in seconded to pay Megan eleven dollars an hour with a makeup cost if she does not reach the seventy-two eighty. At the end of the year, she will be, uh, uh, recompensated up to the seventy-two eighty.
If she doesn't get down.
If, if she passes council's approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. Discuss money distribution between banks, endowment and cemetery CD are easiest other options?
Yeah, and I just put other options in there, uh, because there are other options. Just that the endowment and the, and the cemetery are the easiest because nothing really happens in those two accounts. We can just move those and, and not have to worry about them, just like, just like community center and the, uh, there's already a cemetery CD there, the Colby Fund. Now, the other option would be the, the wind turbine account. And, uh, I mean, we could, we can move any money there that we want to. The thing that I don't wanna have to do is I don't wanna have to keep track of how much money we have to, we have to send from, from Bank Midwest to West Side and every month, uh, you know, and, and get it down to the penny. If we do the savings, uh, the wind turbine savings account, then that's just twenty-five hundred bucks every month. That's easy. We can write a check and just send it over there, just like we transfer the money out of the checking account into the savings account. So, those, those three are not difficult. The most difficult of those three is the savings account, just because we have to write a check now instead of transferring the money. That's pretty, that's pretty simple. And I will tell you that, uh, that the interest rate is, uh, a little better. It's not gonna.
It ain't in the amount that.
It's not gonna be a big pile of gold that we're gonna get, but, but it is a, a little bit better, so. Uh, at West Side is a little bit better than at Bank Midwest, yeah.
Would, would equal off the bank in a little matter.
And on, on one hand, we've, we've always done business with Bank Midwest, uh, so, you know, there's where our loyalty should be. On, on the other hand, uh, West Side is coming to town and they've been here for several years and they do. They do, ten years.
Yeah.
And they do, uh, donate money to the city. They have, uh, whenever we ask them for money, they have it, they haven't turned us away, so.
Well, Chris, I add this up and if you just move two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars over, I guess my take is, what's wrong with putting two hundred thousand dollars in a CD and getting a little more money, keep ninety-six thousand floating? If you have to ever borrow money against it, it's practically nothing against a CD.
So one question is, where do you get the two hundred and ninety-six thousand from?
Well, I grabbed the two fifteen, I grabbed the cemetery, that's about two eighty-six.
Okay.
And if I were funds ten dollars, that'd be about, uh, two ninety-six.
So I don't have any problem with putting the cemetery back into a CD because we can't touch that money anymore.
Right.
The, the endowment, I don't know what we do with that money yet, so, so we can't put that into a CD.
Well, just, just talking, you know, we.
We may have to take that money out right away. Uh, and then the, the wind turbine, we can put some of that money into a CD. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't wanna put ninety percent of it in a CD.
No, I wouldn't either. I'd take at least fifty dollars back or whatever. Come up with a number that is, is comfortable with everybody and, and if you have to pull it out, you can easily get the money out of this, you can borrow against that CD for one year, for practically one percent or something like that. It'll cost you nothing to borrow money back if you want.
How much of that savings wind turbine is actually savings wind?
About a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand left.
And we just spent twenty of that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the bill yet, but.
But we spent twenty of it.
I have twenty.
So I don't know where we would have.
We're down to a hundred and forty thousand.
Less than, less than.
And we're gonna need, if we're gonna start this electrical project, we're gonna need a hundred thousand dollars to start it up.
That's correct. Everybody discussed that, yes.
Yeah, then you may, may, maybe we don't need to do it, but otherwise I didn't know for sure what.
No, I think Gary, I mean, Gary, you got a good idea. But the, the interest difference between a sa- a savings account and a CD is, is not that significant.
It's about forty, forty, forty cents against the twenty, is what it is.
Yeah, but it's still under a dollar. You didn't get that much.
I understand that, but.
It's, it's about a five hundred dollar difference.
Five hundred dollars a year difference.
Yeah. You're still, you're not getting a dollar yet back off of your money. You might need it somewhere else.
Well, you can always get it there. It's not going nowhere.
Yeah, I know it's not.
It's not there. I mean, it's not like it flew out the door, but.
But you'll pay penalty if you have to pull.
If you can borrow against it, it was no, no problem.
Oh, I see. You leave the CD alone. Leave the CD alone, just borrow against it.
If you had to, but just, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put it all in. I'm just saying, if you got, say you had two ninety-six, uh, say a hundred and fifty or a hundred. You don't have to put it all in there, just a.
What does it cost to borrow against again?
Probably one percent. One percent or.
You're not getting one percent off of your CD.
Or whatever it is, you don't have to ask him. We gotta talk to West Side before you do that.
Yeah, because.
'Cause I don't know the numbers. I can't tell you the total number.
It's about forty, point forty-eight, what you get on CD.
Depends on how long you put it in. It's anywhere from point four to point six or six-five or something like that.
I think we're getting point one-five now.
That's a, uh, three to five year, yeah.
That's what I thought I was getting.
Point one-five.
Yeah, that's what.
No.
Yeah.
That's just 'cause you're mayor.
I just thought I threw out the guys. I'm not saying we'd do it. Just do that out there. Not a big deal.
You wanna elaborate a little more and try and find out a little more so you can answer these guys' questions, Chris, before we? Or, or do you wanna do something now or?
Well, first I wanna see if they have any questions.
I guess what we gotta come down to is, is the dollar figure.
Rather than doing a dollar figure, I'd like to see us move accounts.
Yeah, first get that done.
You wanna move the three that are dark in there, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I'm not saying that I wanna do that, Rob. I'm saying that these three would be the easiest three to move. Uh, and the savings wind turbine would not be the full two hundred and fifteen thousand because part of that is.
Right. It'd be a hundred and fifty or sixty.
Yeah, right.
Then what you leave behind, we'll go to where?
That would stay in that account, 'cause that's in there for, uh, and I can't tell you right off the top, but it's either in there for, uh.
Yes, the repair in it.
No, the, the repair's a hundred-and-fifty thousand, but it's, the extra is in there either for, um, the water.
Yeah, water.
Water money we borrow for two percent.
Yeah. One of those two is, is the extra sixty thousand, so.
Do you wanna motion?
And then what would you, you'd have to put a name on that, right?
Over there?
No. Well, you left behind.
And I think we'd just leave it as savings wind turbine. Or we could, we could change it to whatever we want to.
I don't know. We'd have two savings.
No, you'd have to change it down here at this one.
I'd say we could have changes from down here to whatever, whatever really needs to be changed.
Yes.
That way we can track it and people can see it.
Yeah.
Leave that Bank Midwest like that.
Yeah, we can't get too confused.
Yeah, that'd be something we can talk about, Rob.
Do you wanna motion then, Chris, or?
Well, you know, first off, I think we need to have some discussion. This is pretty new. You know, we talked about it at the last meeting a little bit. Then you guys asked me to bring what we can, what we can feasibly move. So I think we need to discuss. You know? I think if we did this, it would, it would certainly, it would certainly even it up a little bit more.
Balance it.
Right.
Well, I think they feel more comfortable having a little bit than not having. That's what I, I think.
I agree with that.
At least can we get something there? That way at least they feel a little bit more like they're all.
My question, it's gonna be directed actually to Rob, is what would, how do you think Bank Midwest will feel, Rob? I, I don't know where you bank for sure, but what, what's their feeling?
I can make a bank. We ran a stamp for nineteen years. I, yes, I don't know. I mean, I, I guess they would, sure, you're gonna be a little bit disappointed, but I don't know that they're gonna be offended, you know. I think they're just.
Well, and like Chris said in the earlier portion, is they've always stepped up to the plate. If we needed an extra change, they've kinda always stepped up to the plate, especially when it comes to the park renovation, they really stepped up to the plate and donated twenty-five thousand. Bam. No problems. Good note says no problems. Get it. So, you know, I, 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 I don't wanna rock the boat, is what I'm saying, Chris. I understand where you're coming from and I, I think we should move some accounts. I agree with you. But my feeling is maybe not quite as much as, as what you're divulging. But I don't know what council feels, because this is you guys' decision, not mine.
Then on, on that note, I would say the cemetery CD and the endowment would be the two easiest ones, the two quickest ones.
I wholeheartedly agree with, wholeheartedly agree with you. That's exactly what I was feeling. But, council, speak up.
I'm kinda the same with Steve, is, I know we've, uh, we've always been in business with Bank Midwest and I understand West Side's feelings too, uh, in wanting to get involved. I mean, they have been getting involved in the community and we need to support a little bit more, but, you know, our, our true backbone actually was Bank Midwest. And, uh.
Thank you, Brendan.
So, I do feel that, yeah, the endowment and the cemetery.
You know, being involved with Kevin and Travis and the community club and those kinda things is gonna do.
Yep.
A lot of work there.
Number one.
A lot of work there. You know, and that's.
So I do feel we need to do something there, but, you know, just.
Well, and, and, and I think in another note, Franny, excuse me, you gotta remember, our insurance for the city is all down here with Bank Midwest. They do have that, or I mean, with, uh, West Side Bank. Bank Midwest doesn't have a portion of that, so.
I, I honestly think Kevin would be fine with us moving those two accounts, the endowment and the, and the cemetery.
I think he probably would be too. It'd be something, it'd be a start. At least feel better, go better.
Yeah, we can, we can relook the situation at over a year or two years. We can go back and look at it.
And honestly, I'll tell you, I think he'll be happy, I think he'll be, maybe not happy, but I think he'll be okay with it because that endowment's ten thousand dollars right now. In five years, it could be two-hundred thousand.
Yep, yep, exactly right.
So, you know, that could be a pretty big deal, yeah.
And I'd like to see us, uh, deal with an explanation if you'd Bank Midwest do.
Certainly.
Good idea. Very good idea.
This is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Very good.
Nothing to do with the service that we, Bank Midwest, or the partnership we've had with them. Uh, we appreciate everything, but we just feel that.
Well, I would think they would understand that.
I, I hope so.
I would think they would. I mean, be different if there's only one bank in town.
Yep.
That's a big difference. I mean, that's all you have.
I see Gail in the big office.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh, really? Now, would you entertain motion?
Yes.
Now, Chris will entertain motion. Franny, I think you did it best.
I make a motion that we, uh, transfer the endowment fund and the cemetery fund to, uh, West Side State Bank.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to move two accounts, the endowment fund, cemetery, uh, fund from Bank Midwest over to West Side State Bank. Roll call. Rob?
Yes.
Fr- uh, Gary?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not starting like we only have six banks up there.
There's a little bit of money up there too, though.
Okay. Wow. Building permits. Who's got a building permit?
I make a motion to approve Paulie Bear's building permit.
Let's do this, Franny.
Okay.
I, I don't have any problem with you approving that. Let's, let's make sure that we do it as it's written because the shed hasn't actually been seen yet. It's still in, it's still in denison. And Gail hasn't been able to see it. He's been told that this is the size of it and, uh, not that, not that it's gonna change.
Upon sight of the shed.
A- as written, let's say.
Let's say, I prove the, uh, the permit as written.
Eight foot by ten, foot by ten, or twelve foot high?
Yeah.
Any deviations, we will whip it clean.
Yes.
You say ten by ten by twelve, huh?
No.
No.
It says in here, ten in parentheses and then, uh, in actual, it says ten to twelve.
Does this, oh, he doesn't know if this meets code if in that district, does he?
If, if it's, that's why I'm saying this, because if it's ten by ten by ten, then it's okay.
Twelve is not.
Maybe twelve's the height, maybe, I don't know.
It still can't be over ten, twelve feet high.
Oh, no.
But it's, it's, it's one right below it.
Eight.
Eight by ten by, and will be either ten or twelve.
Eight foot high. That's the way I get it.
What I understand.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it too.
Yeah, we can't have that.
Twelve feet's too tall, totally. It doesn't pass the.
Most of those are not.
And, and actually, if you look at what Gail wrote, he said he went down there and looked at all the buildings and he didn't see one over ten feet high. And I think the reason why Paulie put ten and twelve feet is because he didn't actually know what the size of it was when he bought it. So maybe we should say it not as written, but up to ten feet tall.
According, I would say something about according to code in that Schrader's, isn't that, is that first edition or second?
First.
That's first edition. As long as it meets Schrader's first.
They say some of them, I mean, everyone's a little different up there, so you don't know. I don't know if anybody kept the, the real code.
It says.
It doesn't matter now.
Says looking.
No, that's only, that's only down there.
I've not seen one over ten feet high. Also, no building should be really, really bad.
And that, and I think that's the ones that are in denison.
Okay, uh, you wanna go with Franny's motion?
Yeah.
You wanna restate that again, Franny, please?
Yeah, probably said none.
How I, how I'll write it, how I'll write it, Franny, and see if this is okay with you, is we'll approve the building permit as long as the shed's not over ten feet tall.
And meets Schrader first edition code.
Covenant.
Wait, wait. Or covenant, I'm sorry. Covenant is what it's called, yeah. Code, covenant. Second?
I'd second that one.
They moved and seconded to accept Paulie Bear's building permit, uh, as long as it's not over ten foot tall and qualifies for Schrader's first edition covenant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Discuss approved corn belt lot marketing.
Gary, you wanna take this one?
Well, no, why not?
Run the two again?
Uh, those three lots down there.
Yeah.
We've got them down there, so what do you think we should do with them? Uh, should we put them in the paper to sell them? We're, actually, we've talked about, Rob, Rob and I have talked about letting, uh, what's the name of that thing? Wall Lake Commercial Industrial Corporation.
Yeah.
Let them, let them run with them, or, or even giving the lots to them and let them do whatever they.
So they can get built on them?
Yeah.
Do we have money? The only reason I'm saying that is I don't think we should just give them to them. Because they're, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, if they got money, I mean, that's.
Okay.
We would probably give them, uh, somebody build a, the lot free if they put a commercial building on there. Would the TIF work out that, that figure? How would you do that?
That's what that committee.
That's something that's been talked about before, Gary, and I, I suppose it would depend on what kinda building you put on there. And maybe, you know, put a really nice building on there.
Can you, can you tell council what's the size of those lots so that they kinda have an idea?
They're twenty-five, there's three of them that are twenty-five feet by a hundred and, uh, I think it's just a hundred feet.
Hundred and twenty.
So.
That's what they are.
Yeah, a hundred feet.
Is it a hundred foot?
So it'd be seventy-five by a hundred, I believe. I believe that's what it is. I know they're seventy-five wide.
And I know they're a hundred deep.
Fifty-five deep.
Okay. And that isn't big enough, Jerry?
I'm talking two acres.
Oh, Jesus.
Well, it'd be nice to get something built there or get something going. We got the lots, so we gotta figure out some way to merchandise them.
Is, uh.
I guess the industrial corporation really got together and we need to.
Brenzy, is he still looking for a, a lot?
Rob?
Yeah.
I don't think he's looking as hard as he was.
Okay. I don't know. I know he was looking for a, uh.
Shop.
Yeah, and then he was gonna sell, uh, skid holders and used skid holders and that kinda stuff out of there.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure that he's still looking. I, I.
He'd need some, uh, front display area, you know, outside. And that's not where we really want there either, you know.
Yeah.
It just wouldn't fit. Especially that, I mean, unfortunately, the funeral home's right there and that just wouldn't be.
Yeah, you always want a pretty reasonable.
And where the other buildings along that site, having like that, so.
I don't know of anybody else that was looking on them, JR, and any of, that's the only two I knew. You know, any more that's looking, or?
Hmm, no. Not really.
I, I agree with council. When I can get moving on this, let's get somebody, get something built and get going forward on it, so.
Well, at least let them know it's available.
Yeah.
We need to, I don't know if you're just putting in the paper, you could have it, put a nice sign there or the, depending on how the TIF or how your deal works, uh, Rob, you should have a meeting on that.
Yeah, we should. And, and then come up with. Advertising or reaching out somehow.
Yeah, or at least.
Would, would, uh, council, uh, approve of Chris running an ad in the paper saying three lots available for commercial?
Let's address that at the next meeting, let's.
Yeah.
Yeah, let him go through that.
Look at it.
Sure. Okay, we're gonna table that one until Rob gets back to us. And Rob will get back to, to Chris and let him know that we put it on the next meeting's agenda. Discuss approved street repair recommendations and options.
This was too big to put in the packet, so.
I like the stuff I can screw a little on.
You can throw an awful lot of the other stuff, Franny.
Look, somebody, are we ready?
Yeah.
Is that, that favor that one that did?
This has been used.
Yeah. Well, we did a lot of moving, Rob.
Franny?
Yeah, you know, Rob.
Not pretty much know which all they are. Basically, I just wanted to give you guys this. Gary and Albert went out and looked at the streets and, and they brought back, uh, this map that kinda shows where they think the worst, uh, streets are at this point. So, my question to you is, uh, do we wanna, do we wanna have, uh, somebody come and give us bids on this right, right here? And, and what we're kinda thinking is seal code everything except for, um, the one on Fifth Street in the middle of the map, uh, the longer one on Fifth Street there. Cause Fifth Street is pretty bumpy. Fifth Street is pretty bumpy. And so a seal code isn't gonna, isn't gonna cure the bumps. You know what I mean?
At least take a double, double deal and then some.
Yeah.
That's where he does, what's his name, when he's driving, it's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The seal code you're thinking is the, uh, the tar down with the red.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, what's that running, Chris? About, you said, you thought around four-thousand dollars or?
Roughly four-thousand dollars block, but we, we're not, I guess.
We don't know for sure.
To say that right now, I, I mean, I think what we should probably do with this is, is look and see, do we wanna spend twenty-five thousand dollars this year? If we do, we can probably get most of this done.
Well, let me ask you this, uh, if that, how long can that money sit in an account without using it?
Couple of years.
Oh, I think there is. What they told me.
We've always had.
They've seen it then? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
But if we use, do a certain number of blocks a year, we'll keep up our streets and maybe won't have to grind them out and redo it, and then you cost a lot of money.
I think we have to. Every year, we're gonna have to upgrade.
That's why doing something like this here is, uh, I do a seal code or at least, uh, upgrade them.
And this one on Ward down there has got that dip in it. That would have to be probably.
Oh, that's down by, uh, that's on the south side, yeah, yeah. Every time I go up to see my daughter.
Need to be leveled, leveled before you seal coat. You gotta bring it up.
What, what, what can you do to that, Rick, then just dig it out?
Tear it up and put concrete in there.
Get a base below it.
That's what I'd do before I'd waste my time on a steel coat.
Well, yeah, that's gotta be something, otherwise.
What happened was, is I got dug up one time, years ago before I started. Then I had to dig it up and do the same thing again because it was not put in there right.
So, and then just threw some.
Yeah.
Over top?
And then it was, it sunk, completely threw some, didn't get packed in there right.
It, it just keeps sinking, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It's, it should be done sinking now, you know, if we could tear it out there. The side hill is pretty tough to get it packed in there right.
Well, the seal code, you talking about what you were talking about the other day, the?
Well, up there, like, we got past Franny's there.
Understand that, but you were talking about when you went to this meeting, you know, wherever, that there's gonna be somebody in the county and.
Oh, uh, well, yeah, Dean, Dean, the stock says there, the same offer we had, they're doing some, they're bringing a bunch of material in and, and this guy from Harlem, who had to do that, they're gonna do some work or something like that. He says, uh, and I told Chris, I says, maybe you should, you should talk to Chris about it, and so I bought into Chris's attention.
So I called the guy who did it for us and, uh, he said, yeah, they're gonna be doing, uh, s- something, slurry seal or something from seventy-one all the way to, from Auburn to Early. Two totally different pro- pro- uh, processes, and so it won't save us.
Won't save us, of course, everybody.
Yeah, so it won't save us any money, uh.
But I think the guy did a pretty good job, the one he had last year. I wasn't saying we, who's got the little bid, but, uh, we were pretty.
Well, the other side of, side of it is, did he say, well, maybe you could do that to these streets here? What he's done?
Or assume the cost, is it?
Yeah.
I don't, as long as he's already set up. I, I don't know that. I have no idea what he's talking about.
I didn't even ask him. I didn't even ask him about that, but it is.
Go past North on, past the golf course, it goes, what, three miles or that name?
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about.
Oh, I see.
A thin coat.
I'd rather have that than the rocks, anyway.
Cause them rocks, I don't think much.
Well, the cost just goes up tremendous after, if you start putting overland, that's the only thing.
Your opinion?
We could ask.
Yeah, I don't know, I'd say that, but just the cost will...
I'd like to ask.
You could almost turn it up, turn it up, put concrete down, which would put two...
The seal coat versus the...
Asphalt, huh?
The rock. Yeah, and you don't wanna put two, two and a half inches of asphalt, then you're gonna have a curb.
Then you're in the curb and you got more trouble seeing it up.
Okay, I'm just asking that question.
And what Rick and I talked about was, what I would like to do is, is get a little bit of direction, I mean, you guys don't have to tell us exactly what we would need to do, but a little bit of direction from you guys. Do we wanna spend twenty-five thousand? Do we wanna spend thirty thousand? We've got it sitting in the account, so we could spend it. And then Rick and I'll talk about, about what we wanna do on each street and have the guys come in and give us a bid, and then we can bring back you guys and, and give you some sort of recommendation, and that way you guys can just make a decision.
Do we have to save any of that money for...
Well, that'd be the reason why I would say that we don't wanna spend all of it.
D fifty-nine.
Because they're gonna come in and do D fifty-nine from the county line all the way to, to town, um, and the, the county engineer isn't excited about doing anything in town here, because if we do something in town, then we have to change all of our intersections, become eighty-eight compliant. And if we do that, then he'll be the one engineer again.
We're talking high power of money, that, that corner of mine is bad.
And I don't think he's excited about that at all.
Can't get him in a wheelchair down in that corner. No, is there, uh, is there any, any grants available because, changing to Franny's cap?
There probably is Franny, but I would say that it would be, uh...
They have about two guys.
Be through the DOT and it would be somewhere, some sort of a fifty percent match, which would be good.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, Gary.
But I don't know what they exactly are.
It's nothing compared to this one up here in this corner, because this corner's already been beat to shit all the years that I've been here.
I know, but I tell you what, if it's a DNR, if we gotta put a corner, make a big bump out on that corner down that corner, I don't know what it's...
Eighty-eight, white, white orange on the road.
Then you got the, the wheelchair deal and all that.
That's what he's talking about.
I know, skateboard park.
Just wanna put some nice rails on it, geez.
Yeah.
They did have go up steps there.
But then I'm still gonna get complaints, because this is all beat to shit up here yet, and you got brand new down there.
Yeah, that's, that's all part of it's gonna get fixed anyway.
It ain't easy to fix, because it's been that way for years.
Well, we just never ground it out and relaid it, that's all.
Yeah, we've never dug it out and actually poured down.
Or, or blacked out, relayed it blacked out, either one.
That corner up there, if you dig it out, just put concrete in it, don't even think about...
It's only about twenty by thirty.
Yeah, it's just that bad. You wanna, you wanna do that whole...
Corner.
Whole length of that corner, you don't wanna...
Yeah.
So, let me ask you this, if you do that, does that still have to be eighty-eight compliant?
Yes, cause you changed it.
Then you get in trouble.
But we already, I think up there, I don't know...
That corner's not as bad as you think it is?
No.
I mean, it looks really bad, because it goes straight up that hill, but it's not as bad as, uh, the corner here down, down here by the bank. Cause that, that one's so high, you gotta take a lot of stuff out of that.
Like stepping off of that one.
This, this one up here, you've gotta go, you've gotta go back about fifteen feet and you gotta change the angle a little bit, and you'll probably have to do a little bit of something to jill and steps, but that'll still be cheaper than trying to figure out whatever we're gonna do that corner down there. We had the DOT here last year sometime in the middle of the summer, and we went from, we went from docks all the way down that whole street, and we looked at every intersection. What you had to do here, what you had, and when we got to that one down there by the bank, I think the lady wanted to go home.
Probably.
So...
They spent a half an hour living that corner.
They spent a lot of time on that corner. So tonight, all I would ask you guys is, is, is this something that we wanna spend some time on? Rick and I'll spend a little bit of time on it.
Well, I think you should.
And bring you guys back some, a good recommendation.
Yeah.
This is what it's gonna cost, this is what we think we should do. Obviously, I think Rick should be involved, uh, he's the guy who works on the streets every day anyway, so...
On Fifth Street?
Well, we talked about it from up past the Lutheran church there, it's not bad from there, uh, from that deal to Lutheran church, are we only talking about?
From where to Lutheran?
Oh.
Some is, some is...
Yeah, we could go up to the end of the, end of the Lutheran church, uh, we just went to the parking lot, but, uh, you could almost go all the way to the end, would probably be better.
Yeah.
It's just, then we're just, it's just in, we're talking, you know what I'm saying, uh...
Then you get to that intersection, it's bad.
We got a little hump, we got just a little hump right there that needs to be leveled up, too.
The problems that don't fall a little.
What are, what are you talking about, Rick?
I agree with you.
When you say that it needs to be redone, what are you, are you talking about digging it all up and...
That needs to be ground out.
Ground out and lay it all back in there?
I picked up spare, people's spare tires, cause it bounced out.
Yeah, we need to actually go inside that intersection.
You mean by fissures, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Let's slow them down a little bit there.
I'm talking about Fifth Street, Rick, the whole Fifth Street.
Slow it down in front of your place, too, to where you did it, too.
Yeah, cover that, didn't we?
Now they go eighty-two there.
Yeah, we got, we got...
Up there by Gus's now, so...
Yeah, let's slow them down, man.
We got, we got speed bumping.
Cause there's a little bit of lime rock in there, huh?
But I...
They settle though.
On Fifth Street, I would take that.
Yeah, they fly.
And I don't know what, you know, maybe just need to ground out and just do the intersections there themselves, get them raised up and make them more...
Level right that one spot there. By, by fissures, you mean, right?
Well, we had to do anything to change the, uh, is there any gutters there?
There's a store line on each corner, I don't know why they have that yesterday.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda wondering, too.
We have figured out why they did, did that, but...
Yeah, they need to be that, because it's...
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're, through a line in from, it'll probably, across the road, and then we'll put them right, all the way down. Stayed on the side of the road, crosses out there at the main street.
Yep.
That's what they, they do. When we pick the water like leak up there.
Yep, do a lot, cause that would be bad.
And tires there.
Oh, uh, same, what is it? They have store line going the other side of the street, right?
Yeah.
That's gotta, that goes that Franny, it's about that much into the curb right now, that's what the problem, that's why I thought, you know, a seal coat on there, you wouldn't have to, you almost, you shouldn't hit it, grind it out, you're getting, you're getting too much, you know what I mean?
You curb out.
That's a trouble, see? But anyway, let's, Chris and, and, uh, probably let everything over, give us a recommendation, maybe.
Damn, money you wanna spend? Thirty bucks?
You may have to.
My thing with Fifth...
If you're gonna go up to here, then you may have to spend thirty.
My thing with Fifth Street, you got two churches that are, two of the biggest churches in this town.
Right.
Are on that street.
Right. Now, or you could just, if you don't do, do that, if we run out of money, we can eliminate one of these other ones that we had to, wait till next year. Then holler them out, what you guys wanna spend?
Let's get Steve Lynch coming down there all the time.
I know.
Yeah, where they track the trailer.
If you wanna see what it does, to Blacktop, go down there and see where they just dumped that dirt on, down at the airport, indoor that Blacktop all the way out.
Yeah, yeah.
They have a parking lot, he drives on the Lutheran parking lot all the time.
It hasn't lately, though.
Oh, two, three weeks ago, three minutes ago, was he there?
Was he on there then?
Mm-hmm.
If he's sitting in the alley, he would have been darkened.
Yeah, and he ain't supposed to.
He shouldn't be on the street.
He's not supposed to be in our alley either.
Well, he was wanting to park out like seven thirty for a while?
Yeah, I think so.
I can't ask, I don't know.
No, it was not, he never parked out there.
He didn't park there.
He parks there, but he has other, he parks down there.
Well, once his shoulders parked on there, it was a relative, now, I'm talking about...
Okay, uh, you guys wanna set a dollar per, do you wanna set a dollar figure, or do you want Chris and Rick to come back with a dollar figure, and we can set it from there?
Come back with the dollar figure and go...
They wouldn't know what the price is, then, by that.
Okay. Okay. Discuss approved credit card machine, we discussed about this last meeting.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, Joe.
See you, Joe.
Hey, Joe? Uh, discuss approved the credit card machine, we talked about it last meeting.
Yeah, so I, I would talk to, uh, Rick Fowler down at Bank Midwest, I also talked to Kevin down at Westside, uh, he said that they could get us a credit card machine, but it wouldn't do them any good, so, uh, plus we'd have to transfer the money from that bank to this bank, so, so we're gonna stick with Bank Midwest on this one. So two options, you can either buy the machine, we've got a machine sitting on our counter, we swipe the card, the machine costs us between two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars, and then you have a monthly fee of right around twenty-two fifty. Uh, or you can do it on your computer, just have a swiper right on your computer, and then that, that costs you nothing, uh, but the monthly fee's a little bit more. It's, it'd be thirty-seven fifty, so it's actually an extra fifteen dollars a month.
So what is the monthly fee doing?
That, that pays Bank Midwest for, uh, if you look down there, compliance fee, a statement fee, and minimum processing fee. So you get a statement every month and, um, you know, you always have to have a processing fee whenever you work with a bank, so, uh, and I don't know what the compliance fee means, but, but that's what that turns up to. Uh, and then the extra fifteen dollars a month for the virtual terminal, so, I mean, if you, if you really break it down, three hundred dollars divided by fifteen, that's about twenty months worth of that fee. So then after two years, you know, you're paying them to have the virtual terminal where you wouldn't pay them to have the actual machine. Really, you know, Lynn and I talked about it a little bit, we, we can make either one work, Lynn's the one who's gonna be working with it the most, she said she can make either one of them work, so...
You think it'd get used a lot, Chris?
I do think it'll get used a lot, Gary, uh, I don't think it'll get used a lot in the first six months, cause nobody will know about it, but once you get that going, I think it'll get used a lot a lot.
Which is better.
This is just to have the thing, then you've got your...
And, and that's at the bottom there, Rob, very good point, there is, there is gonna be a four percent processing fee, uh, because that's what credit cards will charge them. Uh, and Rick and I talked, and he said that after six months, we could review that and see, you know, is it, is it better, is it in our favor, is it in their favor, and we can change that up and down as we go.
I, we were in, uh, this insurance, and we have found, uh, I can't remember the company's name, but they're at two percent straight across processing fee, no other fees.
Oh, really?
But I, I, I'll check that out too further. And I don't know, maybe it's just insurance companies, too, I don't know.
And when those people call me in my store, I say, you know, there's eight people down at the bank that come shop with me and no thank you.
No, I understand that, but we have such a, a big...
I understand that, but I, you know, I'm making that statement in this meeting here, you know, it's...
And I, and, and we bank up there and, uh, like, uh, EFTs, you know, we, we don't get charged none of that. So, when you're doing three and four million dollars a year, the...
Can we advertise that, until that we now accept credit cards? I think that would benefit us, too, don't you, Chris?
Or debit cards?
Yeah, we have a card, we have a two.
Like you does, theirs, and they're pretty happy with that.
So twenty-two fifty...
Well, you're giving them four percent.
Times twelve, it's two hundred and seventy dollars a year.
Four dollars for every way it's wrapped, the card costs, right?
Yeah, they, they...
See, I think we, like you recoups theirs.
Oh, they get there, they charge, if you, if you want to put on a credit card, it costs you four bucks, but some number.
But not really, I mean, if you think about it, if you think about it, that four dollars is four percent of a hundred.
Yeah.
So if you got a two hundred dollar bill, then you're down to two percent, so you're not recoup rate, you're not recouping much, because a two hundred dollar bill in, in Malibu is nothing. I mean, if you have a two hundred dollar bill every month, you're doing pretty damn good. So...
I'm that's, I'm below that.
Well, your house isn't very big.
You're doing pretty damn good.
Small place.
So, so I don't think four dollars is much, I think if we did this, we would, we would advertise it as we're gonna charge you four percent on everything. Whatever we swipe, that's...
I think that's what they do, the don't quote me that number, but I know they do something, but...
My working with Bank Midwest is I think they charge us twenty-five cents on a debit card.
Well, you're not...
Your charge is different on debit card.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not the four percent, just the twenty-five cents.
I see. Yeah, I think debit card does, Chris.
And so we can...
Because it's the credit cards that are getting the money, you know, the, the bank is still taking their twenty-five cents, but the credit card's getting the other three and three quarters percent.
The debit card is generally through Bank Midwest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or any, you know, it's just a, you know, the service that they provide.
Well, we would, quote me that wrong, but wouldn't we, if we did this credit card thing, wouldn't we recruit the, that four percent, the city, from?
If you charge the people.
That's what I'm saying, wouldn't we do that? Or don't you wanna do that?
Well, that's, that's what most, that's what they say, that's like you do, they do that, they charge four dollars or some number, don't quote me that number.
It's four dollars for every swipe.
Every swipe.
What I'm saying is that if they have, somebody comes in here with a three hundred dollar bill, four dollars is not four percent of three hundred.
Right. Yeah, that's all, you got a different deal.
So then you're losing three, three percent.
You're losing, yeah, yeah. Four percent of...
Losing eight bucks. Yeah, you're still getting your four, but you're losing the other eight, because...
All right, four percent of three hundred would be...
Twelve bucks.
Uh, that's twelve bucks.
Getting back to what Rob was talking about, I mean, if you, if you take twenty-two fifty times twelve, that's two hundred and seventy dollars a year to go through Bank Midwest, I don't, I don't think that's too bad. And then depending on, you know, the processing fee, depending on how many people we have to use it, uh, that could be...
Uh, anymore, it's a, it's a card world, and it's only gonna get worse, so, if you have under thirty, you don't even carry cash.
No, no.
They don't even have cash, you know.
So, like, somebody made them before, they might pay their bill easier without...
I agree with, I agree with Albert, I think they'll be in a lot more quicker to pay the bill.
Write a check out or pay in cash.
Yeah, they'll just do that for six months, so you're not...
Until they get shut off.
You can always give a new credit card.
You get one in the mail every...
So what are your thoughts on this? I mean, we're not concerned either way, it doesn't cost us a lot.
Let's just go ahead and move forward with it, but whatever you, whatever you and Lynn decide.
Right, yes.
Okay.
You know, whatever.
I'll take a motion, please.
I'd make a motion, we'd move forward with the, uh, uh, credit card.
Credit and debit card.
Credit and debit card for paying bills.
Seconded, moved in seconded to, uh, have the city accept credit and/or debit cards for payment on, uh, charges incurred. All in papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, Nate?
Do you need that now?
Public forum?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, or he gets banned, sorry, he gets banned.
So, the credit card payment, is that utility bills only, or can they do memberships on fitness memberships?
Sure, bill due... The way they advertise it is, you get your money tomorrow in your account, that's not always true, but it doesn't always, and it doesn't, you don't get one hundred percent of the transactions today and to the account tomorrow.
Yeah. When we swipe the card, their money doesn't get to our account tomorrow.
It comes out of you, it comes, if I swipe my card, it does come out of mine, it just doesn't always make it into...
In the morning, more than likely, you're gonna have... But you'll get it.
Yeah, you'll get it, but next day, you just... Takes a little getting used to, balance in your books.
Well, it'd be, you know, it'd, it'd take about twenty-four hours.
So at the end of the month, and the beginning of the month is when it's gonna get tricky for us. But we'll be able to figure that out.
Just another challenge as well.
You bet, we love challenges, though.
Instead of, instead of doing like a four dollar swipe charge, can we do a, what's that?
Do a percentage.
Could we do a four percent?
Do, sure you add that four dollars right in there with the bill?
Four percent, not four dollars.
Not four dollars.
Pay attention to what she says.
Four percent. That goes right in there with the bill, which is a hundred dollar bill.
That way the city...
There's no use, there's no, there's no use...
Corrects, that is correct.
Yeah, right.
That is correct.
I'm, I don't believe that whole art really do, right?
Okay. Uh, public forum, uh, Chris attended, Albert was there, Lynn was there, uh, attendance was up at our last Northwest Iowa League meeting, which I was very thrilled to see. Everything seems to be going in the right direction, membership is up, attendance was up, uh, the gal that did the speaking, her father had a medical emergency, so she had to be cut short a little, didn't she, Chris? I didn't foresee anything that we were doing wrong as far as when we do our liquor licenses and stuff throughout the city here, did you, Chris? Uh, was there one thing you did say?
No, the only, we don't do anything wrong, the only thing that we do is, uh, check yes to three questions where we can actually check no.
That's where it was, I couldn't remember what you told us, so, yeah, so, and we'll get that rectified, so, otherwise, uh, seems like we were on the top of our game, as far as that goes, it was a very interesting meeting. Food was good, yes? So, safe. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a little deal on, uh, on that, the last couple of years, we've been doing a sidewalk project, are we, the city interested in continuing that? Uh, putting, paying so much for sidewalks, uh, just throw that out there, uh, uh, Chris has probably got some numbers, wants you, Chris?
Yeah, I can tell you that, uh, the first year we did it, we spent, uh, we had, we had a three thousand dollar limit, and we spent probably a little over two thousand of that. Uh, and then last year, we spent, we had a four thousand dollar limit last year, and we spent about fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars of that, so, the problem, yeah, the problem that we see is, is that it's, the people who wanna do it are the older people in town, and they can't do it themselves, and they can't find anybody to do it for them. No contractors would wanna mess with it, uh, so we...
Put this out, contact Jay Stoltenberg or Diane Barons, because that's one of CPS's big things, is, uh, volunteer projects with the labor, with...
You guys wanna do that kind of labor?
No, ask them, I'm just saying, ask them, I don't know, I don't know if they'll, if they'll go with it or not, I don't know.
We could, maybe, uh...
See, we could, maybe, uh, we're paying, how much a foot now?
Three fifty.
Three fifty, being like, we're not using all the money, we maybe could jump that up to say four dollars a running foot, if that would get more incentive, or it's just something to throw out there, or some number.
Three inch?
Uh, four foot wide, four foot.
Four, I mean, two by four.
And it's four foot wide sidewalk?
Yeah, it's four foot wide, and, and we said, I think it was three and a half inches, so, yours looks nice.
Right now, we pay three fifty a foot, a running foot.
Cause I will get something on this here. I don't, I might have two lots that are gonna be there.
So we did get some nice sidewalk foot, and I'll say that, so, do we, I guess.
I don't know, I don't know if we're really gonna change anything, I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, I just, that.
Whatever works, you know.
You wanna, you wanna do it again?
Yeah.
Here's one, here's one thing that I've been thinking about is, is, uh, we talked about our sidewalks, if we do something to our streets, we have to change the entrance to the street. Uh, maybe, maybe what we can do with that money, if we don't spend it all, maybe we can take whatever we don't spend, put it into a savings account, because there is a, there is a, a rule, I guess it's called, it's not mandated, but it's kind of a rule that says that if you own a sidewalk, which we own several sidewalks in your town, that they have to be ADA compliant and it's anal. Two percent, if it's over a two percent grade, you have to change it. So, that's something that we could begin doing as we, as we move, you know, we didn't spend twenty-five hundred dollars last year, let's put that into an account, and let's make a plan that we're gonna actually spend that money to do something that.
Yeah, we probably gotta advertise that we're gonna change the program.
Well, and we've always advertised it.
Thank you.
And we could do that again, if that's what you guys wanna do, we could advertise that.
Why we're gonna change anything? I got a question on the cemetery out there. That is out there. All of those little green signs, what is in memory of?
Tree signs and stuff?
Yeah.
They're all beat to shit.
And you know why? I'll tell you why. Anybody with snow removal and the lawnmowers, they're just high enough where it hits them, they should've been a two foot higher, and you wouldn't have that problem. Because if you look where the bank is, then it's all good there, and as you get on both sides of the bank, they're all shot. They're, they're just put in too low.
Why don't you look into, Chris, if I'm getting taller, the stands?
Yeah, well, the, the problem with them is they're all in concrete, so I don't know if you can get a piece on to add on to them.
There's some signs that aren't, they're gone though.
Well, yeah, a lot of them are gone.
Yeah, and it's all, it's all down the, on the west end, if they're up to the, they're all fine, of course, they can't, they can't mold, they can't hit up against them.
If you get on the other side of that hump, and they're.
Those are entire.
If there's nothing else, else in forum, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me, oh, Chris has got something else?
I got a couple of things. First of all, on that, on that note, do you want me to do something with that? Uh, do you want me to look up those signs?
Maybe replace some of them, or?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be nice, we need to donate the trees and everything, I guess, if they wouldn't cost much, you'd have to put them back.
They're gonna cost much, I guarantee it'll be ten bucks.
Nothing cheap, no.
Well, one time, we took, they took them off the justice board place, and that ever happened.
Yeah, he did, did he put a look, stainless steel rivets in, and when they riveted onto the post, they used regular rivets, so that's why they're falling off of the post. It was all rusted and rotten. But I think them posts need to be at least two foot higher, and I don't think you'd have that problem, cuz I'm sure with the lawnmower, when you go around, you don't realize it, but you're hooking that probably with the lawnmower too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not intentionally, it's just, they're too low.
No, it's not intentional. Well, you know, if, if you want Chris to dig into this, he can, you know, I hate to take some valuable time away from him, but it's up to council.
Oh man, there's a slug of them.
Oh, yeah.
What, you think it's more than twenty?
I was gonna say thirty.
I was gonna say fifty. You read it off?
Is there fifty out there? I know there's thirty or better.
Oh, I, I don't think it's fifty off though, Franny.
What, trees or?
No, them little signs out where the trees are.
Go from one end through the other.
Yeah, but I mean, most of them are, half of them are there, they.
On that hump, they're all there.
They're all there going, once you get up that hill.
No, they're not. I just looked today.
How many is there, you think?
I'm not sure, but going down.
They're all fine. Gus and somebody was out there one day gonna start doing them, and they quit, or, I shouldn't say they quit, I think they.
You want, do you want Chris to check into it or not?
You know, I'd say yeah, because, you know, that's one thing we, unfortunately, we, it's out there, and we need to target a bit of their care of the cemetery. Those people are dying to get in there.
They sure are, Chris, I don't get in a pretty good crowd.
Someday we're gonna fan.
No, no, I don't.
Mike Brody's.
Yeah, uh, we don't have to do anything there, we're not, we're not gonna do anything right now, uh, on that road. We're gonna let them develop, and, uh, yeah, the only, the only two things that I have in here was, uh, wanted you guys to know that Chloe Wallace was hired, um, not exactly, I'm not sure who that is.
Jim Wallace's wife.
Jim Wallace's wife.
Or Jim, Jim, I'm sorry, Jim.
Paul and.
Paul user's daughter.
Okay.
I can't think of her name.
Yeah, uh, that's good, yeah, uh, then the second thing I wanted you guys to see was, we've had some questions about garbage bags in the past, and, uh, people think we're, the garbage bags are smaller. What we did was, we changed to a tie garbage bag, so you didn't have to worry about the twist ties.
We changed to a string.
And, uh.
String, the tie.
Okay, so however you wanna call it, now they have strings in them, you tie the strings where before you had to use the twist tie and tie it on there, and the bags are, the old bags were thirty-three inches by thirty-nine inches, and I don't know if you guys care about this or not, I wanted to in the public. Uh, the new bags are thirty-three and a half by thirty-five, so they're actually four inches shorter, but if you think about it, if you have to twist tie on there, you have to have at least four inches at the top of the bag, so you can get the twist tie on it, so, um, and if you look at these two things, it's, I don't know. You actually get more capacity in a, in a bag that has a drawstring on it than the other one, so.
Yeah, you do.
One thing we did do different this time is we got virgin material, uh, the last bags that we ordered were, uh, recycled bags, and they weren't as strong, and I didn't think they were as strong myself, so, uh, we got, we got material that hasn't ever been used before, so hopefully that'll be strong.
Are they going up then?
The only is.
The price is the same, what's a running bag about roughly?
Our cost?
Yeah.
Twenty-six cents.
The only is, the new garbage bag doesn't fit in my, cuz when you throw something in, it sinks, and you just gotta keep pulling it up, it's no big deal.
You just get one of them bunch cords.
Anything else?
That's all here.
That it? Anything else from anybody?
That most of that is.
Ooh, that was most of your job. No, Rod's already got.
Oh, Rod's got, boy, he's pretty fast.
All in favor, has been moving the second into adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose nay.